Good, excuse me. Good evening and welcome to the May 5, 2025, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body. That's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land-use planning projects, such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market rate, or BMR, housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for implementation of the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. With that, I will go ahead and call the roll for planning commissioners. Commissioner Beruzzi is absent. Commissioner Doe, present. Vice Chair Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Farrak.
Here.
Commissioner Sillen.
Here.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Present.
I am Chair Schindler, and I am present. So we have six commissioners in chambers, which is a quorum, and one commissioner who is absent this evening. The next item on our agenda is C, Reports and Announcements. Ms. Sandmeyer, good evening. Are there any staff reports or announcements this evening to start us off?
Yeah, good evening, Chair Schindler and commissioners. I don't have any reports or announcements, but I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions for Ms. Sandmeyer or any reports or announcements of their own? Commissioner Silverstein.
Yeah, I have a report I would like to mention. I came across an article. This was written last fall, but wanted to make the planning commission and anyone else aware of this, and I believe that staff would be able to send this out. But it is a data analysis on the city of Santa Barbara limiting formally voting and putting in a population cap for the city in the 1980s. And the analysis now is the effect that that has had on commuting patterns across the area and how many more people need to drive in and all the effects of that. And I found it a very interesting article, and it leveraged the U.S. Census Bureau data that has information on all jobs and commutes from the census. And I looked at that information from Menlo Park, and it showed that 67,000 people commute into Menlo Park every day for work, and more than 50%, or I'm sorry, more than 70% of those people commute for more than 10 miles, including many people 25 and 50-plus miles. And so I found it was very interesting, the effects that broader building and development patterns can have on traffic commute and the exacerbation thereof.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for Commissioner Silverstein? Okay. Thank you. We will now move on to the general public comment component of our agenda. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. You're not required to provide your name, district, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to speak, to comment on one of our agenda items, you'll have a chance to speak when we get to that item in the agenda. So to learn how to participate, I'm going to turn to our clerk for this evening, Mr. Turner, to explain how you can participate in public comment and then to begin our general public comment period. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. So if you would like to give public comment during general public comments and you are participating via Zoom, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad. And if you would like to give public comment in person, please fill out a comment card at the back of the room and hand it to me. We'll give it a couple seconds here, but at the moment, we do not have any hands raised and no comment cards. Still none at this time.
All right. Seeing as how we have no requests either in person or on Zoom, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of our agenda. The next component of our agenda, the consent calendar, has no items in it this evening. So we will move past that into section F, our public hearing. There is a single public hearing item this evening. This agenda item is regarding the architectural control and use permit for 325 Sharon Park Drive. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution for an architectural control review to conduct exterior modifications to the storefront of Unit D, formerly Inspiration Day Spa, and a use permit for a change of use from the existing personal service use to a fitness studio in an existing multi-tenant shopping center that is substandard with regard to the minimum parking requirements in the C2, or neighborhood shopping zoning district. Additionally, the proposed fitness studio, which is Body Fit Training, is considered a private recreational facility, which is a special use, and requires use permit approval. Determined this action is categorically exempt under CEQA guidelines, section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. Ms. Khan, I believe you are the staff lead on this project and that we have members of the applicant team, both in person and on Zoom. Is that correct?
That is correct. Good afternoon, Chair Schindler, members of the planning commission. We do have Parag, who's the co-owner of BFT, as well as Keri, the land use consultant for the project here in the city council chambers. We do have Nitesh, another co-owner of BFT, and Darrell, their architect, online with us this evening. Staff does not have any updates to the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome both to the members of the applicant team who are here in person and on Zoom. I was told that perhaps you were going to choose to make some verbal remarks upfront, and then we would take any clarifying questions from commissioners that they have either for you or for staff, and then we would move into public comment. So welcome. If you choose to use the podium and the microphone, we can go ahead and make sure that works well for you.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Chair Schindler, as well as commissioners of the planning commission here, as well as all the staff that has helped us during this process. Just a quick word of introduction. So I'm Parag. I'm one of the co-owners. I'm joined by Nitesh, who is another co-owner. The two of us have been friends for a long time, and we are entering this business together. Keri obviously is helping us out with liaising with the planning department, making sure that, you know, you folks have all the information you need about the business to be able to make informed decisions. So a little bit about sort of the business and where we are. I currently live in East Bay. We looked at a bunch of cities around the Bay Area for our fitness studio location. Really liked Menlo Park, so much so that I'm actually moving to Menlo Park in a month's time. So really, really like the Menlo Park area, the Sharon Heights neighborhood. I think just based on sort of my research on the city, the neighborhood, I feel like a fitness studio such as Body Fit Training is really going to benefit the neighborhood, the folks, just the overall community. A little bit more about the business. So Body Fit Training is really geared towards group fitness in a community setting, focused on personal training services, just small groups getting together, just exercising, both cardio, strength training, and so on and so forth. So that's really the basis of the business itself. It's a franchisee business, members-only model. Yeah, so that's kind of like about the business. We did a lot of outreach with the adjacent businesses. So we spoke to CVS, the chiropractor clinic, dermatology business, and they can be more excited to have a fitness studio there. And so they sort of helped us reaffirm our beliefs that a fitness studio will indeed be the right choice for that center itself. From a design perspective, we expect minimal changes. There's, we are going to redo the storefront, the door, and there's going to be some changes there. The whole idea being that it's going to be in line with the other businesses and the other appearances or their exterior. So we are going to have a consistent approach to how we have our exterior in line with other businesses. And so we also feel that our business is going to improve the health of the shopping center itself. It's going to help other businesses. It's going to drive traffic. Our members are going to go to CVS, are going to go to other businesses, and just bring in really, really good business to the center. So that's kind of like more about the business. I think those are all the comments that I had. And I did forget to introduce Darrell, who's a member from the architecture company, and they're helping us with all the design needs for our center. Let me know if you have any questions, but I really appreciate all the help.
Thank you. While we have you, a good opportunity. If commissioners have any clarifying questions for any of the members of the applicant team or for staff, this is the moment to do that. Okay. No clarifying questions, but there may be more discussion questions in a little bit. But we'll go ahead then and move on to taking public comment on F1. Mr. Turner, could you please provide a brief recap of instructions and start the comment period for F1?
Yes.
You're welcome to sit. Yeah, there you go.
So once again, if you would like to give public comment on this item, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you're participating via Zoom or star nine, if you are on the phone. If you're in person, please hand me a speaker card. I'll give it a few moments. We do not have any public commenters.
All right. Thank you. Given that there are no requests either on Zoom or in person, we'll go ahead and close public comment on F1 and move back into commission discussion and ultimately a motion with regard to the use permit and architectural control. Commissioners have comments or discussion questions for staff or for the applicant team? Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. I have a question for staff. I was just reading the, what I believe to be the applicable elements of the zoning code, which noted, I think the reason that we're here tonight is because recreational facilities are deemed a special use. And in the zoning code, it says that recreational facilities privately operated are a special use except in residential zoning districts. And I was wondering if staff could clarify what would be a recreational facility in a residential zoning district? Because that district would be residential and therefore not commercial. So what does that refer to?
Commissioner Eric, could you? I was looking at the staff report. Could you let me know where in the report that is?
Sorry, I'm looking, I should have said, I'm looking at chapter 16.78 of the Menlo Park zoning code, where it denotes special uses.
Okay, let me pull that up. Thank you.
And specifically, I'm looking at 16.78.030, sub-bullet 13.
Okay. I think that's saying that recreational facilities would not be permitted in residential zones. And in other zones, they would be permitted through a use permit as a special use unless that zone specifically permits the use.
I see. So it's not saying that recreational facilities are not a special use in a residential zone. It's saying that recreational facilities are not allowed in a residential zone.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, I think the project is great. I will simply note that while it would be impossible to do a survey of what is allowed in what city, I believe from reading the Palo Alto zoning code that recreational facilities such as this are a permitted use and not a special use. And I would just like to state for the record that that seems like a reasonable policy and one that Menlo Park could adopt and therefore avoid having recreational facility owners have to come to planning commission and go through this rigmarole.
Thank you. Commissioner Sillen.
Thank you. I echo Vice Chair Eric's comment about making this more streamlined. I would also support that. And yeah, I just want to say it sounds like a great business opportunity. I appreciate that the applicant is moving here from another town and finds Menlo Park appealing. We, I think, should encourage small businesses to come here and open here, and it sounds like a great use. Based on the staff report and my personal experiences, it sounds like even though this shopping center has a substandard amount of available parking spaces, it sounds like they're never fully used. And it doesn't seem like this change in use would in any way cause any sort of parking issues to suddenly come up. So I'm happy to support approving this project as proposed, pending other comments from other commissioners. Thank you.
As someone who lives in D5, I think your statement that this would be well-received by folks in the immediate vicinity and even the extended vicinity is true. I also am enthused because I think, I agree with your statement that it's likely to attract additional business to those, the adjacent retail and commercial spaces, which I think is great. I don't have any concerns about the parking. And I appreciate that there was explicitly mentioned in your verbal remarks, outreach to each of the additional businesses in the shopping center. The only question that I have for you is with regard to music. Is there sort of a criteria for monitoring the volume of music? And have you thought through what the feedback mechanism may be from adjacent businesses who may sort of, for some particular reason, need quiet during a time when music is being part of the, is part of the group experience, the group exercise experience?
Yeah, so just a quick comment on that, and we can, I'll obviously defer to the architecture team to provide detailed information about it. But the volume obviously is controllable and is going to be monitored, you know, on a daily, hourly basis. We will have acoustic insulation as part of the design, such that the sound, the volume, does not really impact other businesses around it. And so it's part of the design. It's not something that is going to be, is going to be impactful to other businesses in this case. And so I'm fairly confident in our design and making sure that it won't cause any disruptions to nearby businesses.
Thank you. It's great to hear that it's been part of the architectural discussions. I'm assuming there was probably less need for noise-canceling, noise-canceling insulation when it was, the facility was a spa, less noisy activities.
Yeah.
I think it's going to be a great addition to the neighborhood and fully intend to support the resolution. Do other commissioners have comments or questions either for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Farrak.
Thank you. At the risk of being redundant, I agree with everything that's been said. Just to add the kind of underscoring, you're saying that it'll add business to the center. I used to be a member of one of the, like a fitness facility that were part of strip malls, and I almost never didn't go to another business when I went to the place for a workout. You know, like Orange Theory in Woodside Plaza and/or down in that, the one off of Embarcadero Road. You know, it's just too convenient. And I also am not worried about parking. I spent enough time in that shopping center to never have a problem finding a parking spot. So just want to underscore everything that's been said. And welcome to Menlo Park. I know it's not done yet, but I have a feeling I know where this is going.
Commissioner Doe.
And to everything that's been said, in your letter, you say that the space has been vacant for two years. I think this will be a welcome addition to fill that space, and I'm happy to make a motion to approve as recommended by staff.
We have a first from Commissioner Doe.
Second.
And a second from Vice Chair Eric. And seeing no other hands raised for further comments or questions, I will go ahead and call for a vote. Commissioner Doe, yes. Vice Chair Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So that is six votes in favor of the resolution supporting the use permit and the architectural control. Thank you for being here this evening in person and on Zoom. We wish you the best of luck. Welcome to Menlo Park as a business and a family. Thank you. All right. As that was the only item in our public hearing, I will move us from the public hearing into the regular business section of our agenda. Item G, which is the selection of the planning commission chair and vice chair for the period of May 2025 through April of 2026. This is not a CEQA project. This is also not part of a public hearing, so I believe no public comment is required. Ms. Sandmeyer, do you wish to set the stage for us or make any updates to the staff report at this time?
Yeah, we don't have updates to the staff report. I can just provide some information on the procedure. So normally nominations are taken separately for chair and vice chair. So first, there'd be nominations for chair, a discussion, and then a motion for first and second and a vote. And then the same procedure would be followed for vice chair. That's everything I have for this item, but please let me know if there are any questions. That's everything I have for this item, but please let me know if there are any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Do commissioners have any process questions before we begin discussion? Okay. Great. Then as we are, and so as per the staff report and Ms. Sandomeyer's comments, we'll do Chair first, and then move on to nominations and voting for Vice Chair. I would like to nominate Vice Chair Eric. We do not, as this is not a public, I can confirm that, but can we please confirm that as this is not a public hearing, we do not need to ask for public comment?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay. That was my understanding. Great. Vice Chair Eric has been serving well as Vice Chair for the last year, filling in for me when needed, and is the longest-standing member of the Commission, who has not yet had the privilege of being Chair. And I believe he would do an excellent job. So actually, before I officially nominate him, I would like to, just in a discussion context, ask Vice Chair Eric if he would be willing to serve as Chair if he were nominated and voted for by his peers.
I would be willing. Thank you.
All right. In light of his willingness, I would like to nominate Vice Chair Eric to be the next Chair of the Planning Commission.
Could I second that?
Absolutely. Commissioner Farrak shall second it.
I will second it very gratefully. I feel like we got appointed at the same time, and you've done a phenomenal job, and I look forward to you serving as Chair.
Is there any discussion on this topic?
Only to just thank you, Chair Schindler. I don't know when the appropriate time to do it is, but I just wanted to express my appreciation for the intelligence and empathy and respect that you have guided this Commission in the past year. You guide the flow of conversation while also being fully present in the content of it as well. And I apologize if that was a wrong place to do it, but yes, I'm very supportive of the motion on the table.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. I don't know when the official time would be, if there is on either of us.
Could I cut in?
Commissioner Farrak.
In light of that, because there may not be the best time, I also want to just add a few more additives: patient, compassionate, and just very articulate. So thank you for guiding us through these meetings with all of those qualities. It means a lot, I think, when you serve with a Chair that's able to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
If this is the time, then I would also like to add my
Let's do it.
Congratulations and thanks to Chair Schindler for, I think, what has been a phenomenal service that we have all benefited from. I have always felt like you were the best prepared for any meeting, and that has carried forward to being Chair. And I also think you've added some nice new elements to our meetings that have added depth to our discussions. So thank you very much. It will be a challenge and an honor to follow in your shoes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Are we ready for a vote? All right. So the motion is for Vice Chair Eric to become Chair Eric effective, I believe, next meeting. Commissioner Doe, yes. Vice Chair Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellen?
Aye.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So that is six votes in favor. Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Sandomeyer, you have everything you need for that one? And then we can move on to Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. All right. So I would like to, just before they're making an official nomination and then proceeding to vote, I would like to ask Commissioner Farrak, who has served the next longest length of tenure, but has also served as Chair many years ago in a prior term, whether she would be willing and interested in serving as Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. I feel like this is a privilege and an honor that we need to ensure everyone gets the chance to be in. And so with that spirit, and also because I know my life circumstances and work schedules are even more busy than they were in 2012 to 13, I think I would like to decline and be an able Commissioner, supporting whoever is Chair and Vice Chair. So thank you for thinking of me. No, thank you. I would not like to serve.
Thank you. All right. In light of that, I would like to ask Commissioner Silverstein, before we do official nomination, it's an official nomination, if he would be willing to serve as Vice Chair.
Before I answer that question, I didn't want to belabor the point and get too sappy, but I want to echo all of the other comments on the eloquence and shepherding of these meetings that Chair Schindler has had, and did not know that Commissioner Farrak wouldn't want to serve as Vice Chair. And as such, I just want to reiterate how, while I was not living in Menlo Park during your tenure from 2008 on, I cannot imagine that you were anything but an amazing Chair of the Planning Commission at the time. But to answer the question on whether or not I would be willing and able to step in in the circumstances upon future Chair Eric, not being able to make a meeting, the answer is yes.
Thank you very much. In light of that discussion point and that feedback, I would like to nominate Commissioner Silverstein to be the next Vice Chair. Commissioner Doe?
I'd like to second that.
All right. We have a first and a second. Any interest in discussion or comments? Commissioner Sellen?
Yes, I also was just gathering my thoughts, but wanted to appreciate you, Chair Schindler, for doing such a great job over the past year. I've been most inspired by your, I'd say, composure and respect for speakers, whether it be the community or people up here, staff, et cetera, and being well-prepared. So thank you. And I support Commissioner Silverstein's nomination for Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Sellen. Seeing no other hands raised, I will go ahead and call for a vote. Commissioner Doe, yes. Vice Chair Eric?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Gratefully, yes.
Commissioner Sellen?
Just yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Humbly, yes.
I am also an enthusiastic yes. That is six votes in favor of Commissioner Silverstein being the next Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Congratulations. Thank you very much. That's it. Do we have everything that we need to proceed from a staff perspective on that one?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Then I will close up Section G, which are our general business, and move on to the final section of our agenda, informational items. Ms. Sandomeyer, would anyone from staff like to provide an update on any upcoming Planning Commission meetings or agenda items?
Yeah, so the next meeting will be in two weeks, May 19th. We have a couple of items. We have a use permit for fitness use at 700 El Camino Real, single-family home, DA annual review for Willow Village, and also for Meta. Then the following meeting will be June 9th, and that agenda is not confirmed yet. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Farrak?
Thanks. I have two small things. Just a reminder, I announced it last time, but May 19th, I will be traveling for a workout of the state, and prefer not to stay up this late if I am on the East Coast. So I will be missing May 19th. And then the other announcement, I just wanted to remind everyone, is Affordable Housing Month. There's a plethora of events, like 60 events up through the end of the month. Please check out SV at Home, Silicon Valley at Home.org website. And another option would be Housing Trust Silicon Valley. There's lots of ways you can find, you're hopefully on some of these email lists already, but encourage you to attend. There's a particular workshop that was farded by Ms. Sandomeyer. I know sometimes the affordable housing financing is sort of a mystery and kind of confusing, and it will be still after the 101, but it will help chip away at it. So encourage you to go if you can. It's online. You don't have to go anywhere. It's a webinar. You can pretend you're working. It's all good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrak. All right. Seeing no other informational items, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:37. Thank you.